I'd like to call the City of Edwardsville City Council Meeting for May 5th, 2020 to order. And I would ask...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeannie. I'd like to welcome all of you that are watching on our different networks, ECTV and Facebook Live. This is a truly unique city council meeting and a unique evening thing that I'm in a room giving a talk or speech here later tonight and there's nobody here. We're all watching. So this will be something for generations to look back and realize how we made it through this time of COVID-19 and the safety distances that we practiced. So with that being said, I still would like to welcome all of you. And we did not have any citizens wishing to address the council this evening. So we'll go on to the agenda, which first item is exciting opportunity. We create a new position of Finance Director. So our current City Clerk, Jeannie Wucheszek, was appointed to that position of Finance Director, which leaves that elected position open. And as Mayor, I have the ability to suggest to the council for appointment an individual for that position. And this individual comes to us, comes back to us, actually. She served as our Human Resources Director for over 10 years. And I had the opportunity to work with her for several of those. She's a true professional, she's very intelligent and clever. And I'm very excited that she agreed to take on this position. So with that, I would ask the City Council to approve the appointment of Emily Bates to serve as our new City Clerk.
Make a recommendation? I make a motion to approve Emily Bates as City Clerk.
I second the motion.
Make the motion a second. Discussion?
Excellent choice.
I was just gonna say that.
This is Alderman Rizby, I'm glad she's back.
Excellent.
So am I. It's Chris Farrar.
Alderman Lauer, welcome aboard, Emily, good to have you back.
Okay, Jeannie, I think we do need to do the roll on this, so if you would call a roll, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Hi.
Mr. Kraus?
Hi.
Mr. Farrar?
Hi.
Mr. Lauer?
Hi.
Mrs. Stack?
Hi.
Mr. Burns?
Hi.
Mr. Rizavi?
Hi.
Motion passed. Congratulations, Emily. You'd like to say a few words, I know you're on as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council for this opportunity. I feel that my prior 10 years of employment, like Mayor Patton mentioned, with the city will allow me to make a positive contribution in this role as City Clerk. As we all know, the city is made up of many dedicated employees and elected officials. And I really look forward to working with all of you again in service to my hometown. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Now, a little... But the next thing we need to do for this is we need to give you your official oath. So I would ask that you would raise your right hand and repeat the oath as I... I state your name.
I, Emily Bates.
Having been appointed to the position of City Clerk...
Having been appointed to the position of City Clerk...
In the City of Edwardsville?
In the City of Edwardsville.
Do solemnly swear and affirm...
Do solemnly swear and affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
Of the position of City Clerk to the best of my ability.
Of the position of City Clerk to the best of my ability.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations, Emily. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda this evening is the appointment of our city officials. These officials, if you're just watching this, first meeting of the year, are the officials that are appointed typically every year to these positions. But they serve under the Mayor, but also at request of the Aldermen and certainly for the citizens of our community. So for this evening, I'm asking for the reappointment of all these individuals to their offices. Under Executive and Administrative, I'm asking for City Administrator Kevin Head, Finance Director Jeannie Wucheszek, City Attorney Jeff Burke Bigler, Department of Human Resources Director Amanda Tucker, Department of Police Director Jay Keven, Department of Public Works Director Eric Williams, City Engineer Ryan Zwyjak, and City Planner Emily Foltz, Fire Department Chief Richard Welly, Parks and Recreation Department Director Nate Tingley, and Information Technology and Communications Director Devin Gray, and Economic Community Development Director Walt Williams. I'd ask for a motion to approve those appointments.
No move by Alderman Kraus.
Same by Alderman Rizavi.
Lots of support for our department heads. That's wonderful. Any questions or comments?
It's an excellent staff.
Absolutely.
Alderman Lauer, I think, Hal, you've put together a great team, a great group of people to work with. With only the city as their main focus, they've done a great job.
Alderman Burns, I agree. Top-notch people.
We're very fortunate. And at the end of tonight, when I give the State of the City address, it's because of these individuals that I can show the success and the progress that we've made as a community. So I appreciate your support. With that, roll call on the motion, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Hi.
Mr. Kraus?
Hi.
Mr. Farrar?
Hi.
Mr. Lauer?
Hi.
Mrs. Stack?
Hi.
Mr. Burns?
Hi.
Mr. Rizavi?
Hi.
Motion passed. That brings us to the appointment of the Alderman committees. There's just a couple subtle changes here. Like our department heads, we are very blessed to have citizens that wish to serve in this community that do it for the right reasons. They do it because they want to make Edwardsville the place to raise a family and the place to have a business and the place, you know, to live your whole life. So these individuals are certainly appreciated, each one of our seven Aldermen. And with that, we have four committees. And I will announce those committees and those positions. Again, most of them are the same, there's a couple little changes here. Under the Administrative and Community Service Committee, ask the Chair to be Art Rizavi, Will Kraus, and ask Jay Morrison to be members. Under the Finance Committee, asking Craig Lauer to serve as Chair and Chris Farrar and Janet Stack to serve as members. Public Safety Committee, Alderman Will Kraus as Chair, Janet Stack and Chris Farrar as members. And under the Public Services Committee, Jack Burns as Chair, ask Jay Morrison and Craig Lauer as members. Ask for a motion to approve those appointments.
This is Alderman Kraus, I make a motion to approve.
Alderman Burns, I second.
Make the motion a second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Hi.
Mr. Kraus?
Hi.
Mr. Farrar?
Hi.
Mr. Lauer?
Hi.
Mrs. Stack?
Hi.
Mr. Burns?
Hi.
Mr. Rizavi?
Hi.
Motion passed. Thank you. The next is the appointment of our Boards and Commission members. These will be either reappointments or new appointments based on vacancies that we needed to fill. Very, very blessed to have over 125 citizens volunteer on these Boards and Commissions. They serve very important roles for the community. We're talking about planning and development guidelines, talking about recycle, recycling, conservation of energy. We have boards and commissions that fill up our raceboards or fence in our parks. It's a broad spectrum from historic preservation all the way down to our Police and Fire Commission. So extremely important positions. I will announce those new appointments. And that would be on the Band Board, asking for the reappointment of Mark Hahn and Kim Hudson. Under Beautification and Tree Commission, the reappointment of Planet Soldin. Under Cool Cities Advisory Committee, the reappointments of Dr. Rachel Tompkins, Jamie Henderson, Tom Kinsella, Brigham Kimmick, Carol Lidle, and a new appointment of Stephanie Malink. Under the Board and Fire and Police Stationers, the reappointment of Jean Hughes. Historic Preservation Commission, the reappointment of Joe Hutton, Bob Nigret, and Stephanie Lance. Library Board, reappointment of Alan Duncan, Kim Harrison, and Chris LeFicus. Mobile Intensive Care Trust Committee, appointment of Andrew Carruthers. Plan Commission, reappointment of Greg Coffey and David Gerber. Police Pension Board, the reappointment of Rich Hampton. And our Arts, Recreation Arts and Special Events Committee, the reappointments of Tanner Alexander, Janet Hororian, Susan Weiss, and the appointment of Joshua Farke. And under the Zoning Board of Appeals, the reappointment of Bob Potts. Ask for a motion to approve those appointments.
No move by Alderman Kraus.
Second by Alderman Burns.
Make the motion a second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Hi.
Mr. Kraus?
Hi.
Mr. Farrar?
Hi.
Mr. Lauer?
Hi.
Mrs. Stack?
Hi.
Mr. Burns?
Hi.
Mr. Rizavi?
Hi.
Excellent. Motion passed. Now is the time of the evening and I asked our intelligence reporter to get the word out so hopefully get more citizens who are staying at home and being safe, staying in place. I thought it would be great for them to watch maybe their first ever State of the City address. And those who have watched in the past, it's a true honor for me as Mayor to again describe what last year's accomplishments looked like and the individuals that were responsible for those accomplishments. As you drive around the city, many things get taken for granted. The amount of effort and time that goes into making this such a beautiful community is due to the hard work and the effort of everybody that I'll be mentioning here tonight and many of our employees behind the scenes. We have over 175 full-time employees and sometimes 50 to 75 part-time employees plus the Boards and Commission volunteers. So it does take a lot of folks to put all this together. And this is just a sense of pride for me to be able to present the accomplishments that we saw in 2019 and the first part of 2020. That being said, every year I try to pick out a group or an individual that deserves it of special recognition. Sometimes it'll be our public safety personnel. Other times it has been our public works department. I know that I've literally honored the volunteers to our Boards and Commissions one year and have them to City Hall on this evening and honor them. But this evening, it's kind of interesting, over the last couple months, and I thought about who to select and who to point out as contributing above and beyond this year. And it's actually the citizens of our community. I have been so impressed and so proud of how they've handled themselves during this COVID-19 pandemic. It has been, you know, just the thoughtfulness, the respectfulness, the caring that has been shown by our residents has just been outstanding. You know, we've had, we have 26,600 residents in this community and I've probably only had two or three that have reached out with concerns. Everyone else is handling this so well. And a lot of credit goes to our public safety personnel who are on duty 24/7, 365, led by our Fire Chief Rick Welly and our Police Chief Jay Keven. We couldn't be represented by finer individuals. So thank you to the citizens of Edwardsville. I am recognizing you as the group that has performed just with such dignity in such dire times. I know it's tough with our restaurants closed and our workplaces closed. It's also tough having those kids at home and not having them going on. But I've been very impressed and thank you for the way you've handled this. Hopefully we'll be out of, you know, the shutdown pretty soon here. With that being said, I'm gonna move into our first apartment. And as I was just mentioning, our Fire Department, Police Department are 24/7. Here are some of our paramedic firefighters saying in this slide that they stayed at work for you and they appreciated you staying at home for them. That keeps them safe, that keeps, and we definitely have seen people's faults. We've seen people taking care of themselves and handling things in a great way. But our Fire Department deserves a lot of credit for putting themselves at risk and their families at risk for being on the front line of this pandemic. Second slide here. John, if you could, there we are. I think Gavin slipped them. This is our Emergency Command Center. What you're seeing there is the command team that we pulled together, which is all our department heads. Starting in mid-March, we began meeting on how to take this pandemic head-on and how we could make it as easy and safe for our citizens to function during this time. So Chief Welly runs the Operations Command and meets every day to coordinate and make sure that we're doing everything that's in the Governor's orders as well as the President's orders. And I've just been fortunate to have those kind of leaders. As you've seen, there's a lot of mayors across this nation that have had to be on TV on a daily or weekly basis. I haven't had to do that because I have individuals like these folks serving with me and getting the job done. Next exciting thing that happened for the Fire Department this year was a new pumper truck. About an $800,000 purchase. This brand-new pumper truck, as you're seeing here in these pictures, has a basically a remote-controlled nozzle that can turn 360 and control rate of flow. They get on the scene and use that nozzle and that, I believe it's a six-inch...
Six-inch one?
Six-inch nozzle to put quite a bit of water power onto the fires. So a lot of storage in this vehicle, a lot of efficiency. So we're very proud that we were able to get this for our fire personnel. Next slide is going to honor a couple of our police officers. The Southern Illinois Law Enforcement Commission, SILEC, honored two of our individuals this year. This is Sergeant Brian, and Sergeant Brian was instrumental in school safety program for District 7. You have no idea how much time and effort between our school resource officers and Sergeant Brian, who manages that group, goes into making sure that our schools are as safe as they possibly can be. And some of the programs that were implemented by Sergeant Brian, let me get to that page. Just an amazing amount of work over the year. Trained approximately 1,000 District 7 employees, teachers and students, audited each system surveillance cameras, installed a modern surveillance system that's coordinated remotely. All the doors are numbered on both sides. He implemented clear, unambiguous, concise lockdown announcements and purchased radios for our school resource officers for extra communication abilities. And each classroom is supplied a five-gallon emergency bucket so that they have those for the safety of the students and the teachers. So congratulations to Sergeant Brian for that award. Next, you're seeing another recipient of a merit award, and this is Officer Stephen Stockhausen. And Officer Stockhausen came into a scene with a mentally challenged individual that had a weapon. And it was potentially extremely dangerous, not only for our officers, but for this individual as well. As you often see across the country, these things can end in tragedy with that perpetrator being shot. But because of his skills and because of his ability to deescalate and control the situation in a professional manner, that individual was safe and was able to return home to his family. So congratulations to those two individuals from our Police Department. Next slide, I believe, is, yes, it was a very aggressive program. In fact, it's a six-point program to update our codes, our development codes and our zoning. And Emily Gates, our City Planner, Emily Gates, excuse me, has been doing a fantastic job. Emily's taken on this project in three phases. The first phase you'll see here tonight was updating the downtown area. The central main business district, there were some concerns about the building heights and setbacks and parking locations. And so Emily took that on and, excuse me, Emily Foltz, and put that together for us. Next slide. Mid-downtown business district. This is just reaching out of the main corridor, but it talks again about setbacks and height restrictions. So this is another section that you'll see summarized in our new zoning. And as we stretch out a little bit, the downtown transition district. There was also some concern that, you know, people could buy property outside the downtown area and build large buildings and it would affect the streetscape and the aesthetics of the downtown. So Emily had quite a few public hearings on this and met with a lot of constituents. Those meetings took place at the Wildy typically, but I know a lot of input was also received online. So this is a very challenging process to get input and to get these codes updated. And it really gives a blueprint for the future of the city. We have the mixed-use district that was worked on as well. And I believe there is a couple neighborhood zonings. Yep, the rezoning of the North Kansas area to R1. So that's not all that our zoning department was up to. We had other things that came down the pipe. Of course, the legalization of cannabis in the state of Illinois required us to put some restrictive measures in place to minimize the impact on our neighborhoods and our business areas. So that was done, as well as a study of our downtown contributing and non-contributing properties, especially along North Main. There's a lot of confusion on North Main, what's historic, what's new and what is valuable to the character of our downtown. So that was worked on. And then finally, food trucks. It's been talked about for years. And Emily put the group together to, and they worked with the county and come up with a way that we can have food trucks that are available to our residents but not necessarily impacting our downtown restaurants. Moving in, same department, Emily works in our Public Works Department. And the head of that, Eric Williams, is always busy and he's had another fantastic year. The slide that you're seeing before you is the building permit totals over the last 19 years. And I know on average, the last six years, we have averaged $146 million worth of permits. If you look at the previous six years, we averaged $47 million worth of construction permits. So that department is extremely busy. It's no secret that our town is growing. And it doesn't happen by luck or, you know, just chance. These individuals are working with the developers and the investors to make sure their projects not only get off the ground, but add to the value of our community. The construction permit totals, we average around 1,100 permits a year and we were close to that number as well. Sometimes that number fluctuates with roof permits depending on hailstorms and things of that nature. But 1,100 permits came across our permit desk at Public Works. The Public Works Department also does some things behind the scenes. This is literally a sewage pump, screw pump. And what it does is move sewagees from our water, our wastewater treatment center from one area to the other. I know that this is about a $400,000 project, lots of engineering goes into that. You might have seen this construction project occurring on Governor's Parkway. This is the Ridgeview Road Regional Lift Station. Put in a lift station to move sewage from the south part of the city going out towards the new YMCA. This is a $1.7 million project that was completed this year. And it will serve Anderson Hospital's new facility there on Goshen Road as well as all the development growth that will occur in that corridor. So we have to get out in front of the growth with these sorts of construction projects because they're deep and they're messy. Almost $3 million worth of road improvements occurred this year. This is Hale Avenue before the road construction and upgrades. And the next slides will show you their new sidewalks, their new curbs and gutters. There's also a new water line under that asphalt surface. So above-ground infrastructure and below-ground infrastructure on Hale Avenue is brand-new. And I know Alderman Kraus is thrilled about that. This is Goshen Road, right by the new YMCA. This is before the road project. And we've got an update here showing the curb and gutter and all concrete surface. There is a multipurpose path on the right-hand side. This side will have that added as development occurs on the Y-side. And the next road project, I believe, was Fifth Avenue, yes? And you can see that Fifth Avenue used to not have a sidewalk. It had no curves and quite a narrow street. And that was improved. You can see in this new picture sidewalks and a nice little apron of grass and obviously new infrastructure below. That's, that's the key. Everybody wondered, we had a slight increase in our water rates this year. And that's because every time we do a road project, we get new water lines hooked up to each house and each business. We took out the old lighting, the fluorescent lighting down at M Street at our garage and got energy-efficient LED lighting put in. That's a way to keep our energy costs down. That was also in the Public Works Department. And next slide is moving the nickel plate station. So the nickel plate depot has found its final resting spot. And you'll see the footings and the foundations are poured and the building is actually on those now. And we'll see the renovations of the exterior and interior portion of the depot here in 2020. And hats off to Alderman Morrison, who's heading up a team of volunteers and our Parks Department as well as Public Works working with him on that. The next slide, I'm sorry, there's a little bit of a delay that we're getting. But Hawthorne Hills subdivision is out on Goshen Road and they added a second phase. I believe it's one of our most beautiful landscapes of any of our subdivisions. Literally hundreds and hundreds of trees planted in that subdivision as well as multi-use paths. So a job very well done to our developer and we're excited to have Phase 2 opening. Our Public Works Department also works side-by-side with our Parks Department. And our engineers at Public Works are credited with just an amazing new ball-diamond complex in Soccer Field Complex, Plumber Family Park. The tolerances, if you look at that lower-right screen, you'll see a ball-diamond there with home plate. For that field to be astroturfed and the company to take over the responsibility after grading, the drop from home plate to center field had to be within a quarter of an inch of the engineer's expectations. And there's four of those. And so our engineers are out there doing inspection. I hope when we get to open the park, you not only look at the ball-diamonds and look at the concession buildings and the lighting, but look at the attention to detail that you'll see in the concrete, the landscaping, the brick work. That's because our Public Works engineers are out there every day. David Circo and Ryan Zwyjak, making sure that the citizens are getting their money's worth. And this is a park that I will, I believe will be a gem for the community for decades to come. So congratulations and thank you, Public Works Department. We also had an add-on to our dog park. That was citizens' demand. We sometimes have 30 people and dogs in that park. So the expansion took place this year and that was a combination effort between our Public Works laborers as well as our Parks Department coordinating some contracting work. Next slide. Economic development. So some of the things that we're doing to promote Edwardsville and be creative. We've had a lot of discussion about this, how do we come out of COVID-19 and our restaurant shutdown? We took this on last year. This is a slogan that was put together by Sherry Hickman at Creative Options. Sherry does not only our logos for these types of projects, but our downtown banners, which you'll see here in a few seconds. But we're slowing a foodie kind of town and we're selling mugs and T-shirts as well as carry bags. The banners, which have started coming up this week, are brand-new banners to brighten up our downtown and encourage shopping, dining, walking through the downtown area. So thank you, Sherry. Even the Plumber Family Park will have new banners. This is a very exciting portion and I give credit to Kevin Head, our City Administrator, and others that worked on this. But there's a lot of tiger pride in this community, a lot of orange and black pride. And so we're honoring some of the special athletes and teams that have worn the orange and black over the years. So some of these banners you'll see in the downtown area with pictures of some past champions and some history that our community is very proud of. And economic development-wise, you're looking at the two Worldwide Technology Buildings. These are a million-square-feet facilities employing nearly 800 people. This is a campus for worldwide technology. They actually have room there to potentially build a third building. But they have grown leaps and bounds over the years and they decided to go big. And they certainly did that. So if you're driving along 255 and you look to the east, you'll see these two buildings. This is a welcome addition. We're so happy to have Anderson Hospital in Edwardsville officially. And this is their ambulatory care center and that will be opening soon. It's across from the Myers Center YMCA on Goshen Road. And very happy to have the professionals and healthcare that they will deliver here in town. Lion's Choice is back. They're back close to where they were before, but very modern building and very outgoing and aggressive ownership. We're looking forward to getting our restaurant scene back open. our restaurant scene back open. I know they're still doing drive-through there, but if you get a chance to go in and see the beautiful decor and stonework, it's a really impressive new addition in the shopping area out there on 159. This is Whispering Heights. You can't miss these buildings, big and beautiful, with nice patios and restaurant and retail down below. This addition over to the Enclave area of 157 will really bring a lot of traffic, both foot traffic and restaurant traffic, as well as residents that, individuals that don't want to necessarily own a home and be responsible for maintaining the yard. They have the option of renting these apartments, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments with some beautiful views and quick access to downtown. This is just up the street in Timberlake Village. This is the home of an orthodontist and a pediatric dentist. And it's a beautiful new building in Timberlake Village, as well as, I believe there's an eye doctor going in there as well. It was the goal of the subdivision, I remember way back when I was on the city council, that professional services be available in that area for the subdivisions behind there, that they could actually walk to appointments and walk to restaurants. And so I believe that area is finally, you know, coming into its own. And this is the old Madison Mutual site, which is hardly recognizable from, you know, five years ago. Now it's traced on the Parkway. And this is, makes it huge residential. You can have apartments in there, and you also have all these businesses down below. You can Doc's and Doc's Smokehouse and Goshen Coffee, Taste of Lebanon will be coming soon, Sunflower Dental. Just a nice mix of restaurants and businesses for those who want to live in that location. The Shenanigans Restaurant was repurposed into the EXO Lounge and Nail Bar. It's been so popular. I mean, the parking lot's been full since it opened, and now they're adding on to the back already. I don't get my nails done, so I can't tell you exactly what the inside looks like, but I hear a lot of positive things about that new investment in town. And the Reserve. This is a student housing that's finished out and occupied by students out on New Pope Road. To the right, you'll see Beaum Woods. That's a historic Beaum Woods. It's a state historic property, Forest Reserve. And behind the Reserve is where Darda Park, our nature woods there. And you'll see some pictures coming up of the planting. So development in the front, and we're able to preserve things in the back. And this is a Matt Fund and his wife project called The Flats. This is near City Park, right by our Public Works Department. And again, it's mixed-use, apartments above and offices down below. The Funds also took on the repurposing of the Intelligencer Building. It's a banquet center, beautiful interior, open space, just a lot of history in that building. And congratulations to the Funds for preserving that history, but making it a unique and necessary needed space in downtown. This, this development was done really last, year before last, but the restaurants have finally completed and opened. You can see Crazy Oats, Global Brew, we've got Sugarfire BBQ, and Chicken Salad Chicks. And this was such a popular area that they had to expand their parking, because we literally couldn't get enough cars in to frequent those great eateries. So moving on to our Parks and Recreation Department, another busy year. And, you know, hats off to two groups. We had a group that did half the year. That was our former Parks Department, and we pretty much have a brand-new department led on the right by Nate Tingling, and then our Sports Superintendent Travis Forre, Amy Baxter is our Office Assistant upstairs, and Trina Better has been working hard on special events and certainly a web presence for us. So we've got some new faces, but they're picking up with all the programs that everyone was so used to enjoying. And this is a little bit of a sad part of the presentation, because we've had to cancel a lot of these for the early summer already, but we're hoping and we're working hard to be able to bring these events back as the governor lifts some of the stay-at-home orders. But we had municipal band every Thursday, concerts in the park on Friday, children's art on Saturday, and movies. You know, it's a very busy city park, and we're blessed for that. And it'll be that way again here before we know it. In addition to the special activities, the Daddy Daughter Dance and the Mother and Son Date Night, those are two hugely popular events. The family kite flying, as well as the fishing derby and family campout. Another busy year with lots of participation. Under the holiday special events, we have Halloween and Santa House, as well as the Els Workshop and the Winter Market. In 2019, we had a lot of activities, a lot of rentals of our park, special events like Brew Fest, as well as Taste of Edwardsville and different things. You could see 35 events held in our city park. Seventeen events were from companies or groups outside the community, and we had 92 pavilion rentals for baby showers and birthdays and all the fun family reunions and so forth. So very busy Parks Department. And this was the Darda Woods, as I described earlier. You can see we've added almost 2,200 trees to that farmland. When we first purchased that ground, it was being farmed for beans and corn. And we planted grass out there and have started to put trees, native trees, that will grow and enhance the character of the woods behind them, there you see in the background. So excellent job, our Parks Department. We have to put those tubes around them, because the wildlife out there is very thick, from the rabbits to the deer. We worked with Glen Carbon and SIU again to host over, I think, 6,000 different people from Edwardsville, Glen Carbon and non-residents, as well as students enjoying the pool last year. It's a beautiful pool that could have been shuttered if not for the job of our Parks Department and working with our neighbors in Glen Carbon. Plumber Family Sports Park, we were hoping to open in April. Actually, we did have some play in April. Glenn Ed Soccer was out there with their soccer teams. They had some games and lots of practices. But after the shutdown requirements, I guess that was February, excuse me, after March shutdown, it kind of got shuttered. But that, that park will have four synthetic baseball and softball fields, three synthetic multipurpose fields, and three natural turf multipurpose fields, soccer, football, lacrosse, 12 pickleball courts, two concession stands, and one pavilion. And we're looking forward to having a ribbon cutting. That had to get delayed due to COVID, but we will be back out there. We had over 450 people sign up for that ribbon cutting. So we're hoping to get that going possibly in June. The association relationships that we've been able to build with, as you see there, Glenn Ed Sports, Edwardsville YMCA, Swivel Baseball, Challenger Baseball, and SLISA, it's the soccer group out of St. Louis. So those different organizations have partnered with us and are using the facility, renting the fields from us. And it's very helpful because a lot of our residents and other kids that live in the community play in those leagues, and they will be able to play here near home and host some games in our town. We expect over 60,000 participants every year through those fields. Any given weekend, you'll see 2,500 out there easily. YMCA Soccer will have their Saturday Soccer Leagues out there, and that's an exciting time with over 1,000 residents and kids out there playing. Speaking of a busy venue, our Wildy Theater had its best year ever. Over $1 million worth of ticket sales. Congratulations to Al Canal and his entire team. 30,000 tickets were purchased, including, I think we had 45 $2 movie nights with 4,400 people attending. So we've had visitors, about 40% of those visiting the Wildy Theater come from outside the city of Edwardsville, and the Missouri side is really starting to appreciate that with the acts that Al has been able to book. So congratulations and thank you, Al, for making the Wildy a success. And finally, we're going to move to our IT Department. And as you would expect, IT is not slides, they're video, so hopefully this all goes smoothly, and Devin can hit the audio button. So our IT Department, as you see, has grown significantly. We're putting in a lot of cameras, also videoing a lot of events from city council meetings to concerts. Over 150 security cameras have been installed throughout the community, making our community safer and just keeping our property protected. Evan and his team have, have done a fantastic job. We went from hosting a little cable TV channel to really maturing into an IT department with multiple capabilities. I know that our department has leaned on the department heavily for their computers and upgrades to the computers. But as you can see, these videos are, security cameras are very helpful, and these can all be watched from our dispatch center, both daytime, you see here, and then you'll see a nighttime version of our downtown area as well. So these cameras focus at a great distance. You know, this is, I don't know, probably 1,000 feet away, and you can read that sign pretty clearly. So we appreciate, there's the nighttime vision. I think somebody told me the camera at the police department could see somebody on the Leclerc Water Tower and identify the face. So that's how much scanning it can do with that system. Jill Shark from our library, our library director, director, has just done a fantastic job. We are so happy to have Jill on board. I know she's been there a full year, but the programs that she's been able to bring are very exciting. This is not a place that just has books. The citizens need to know that there are so many resources available at the library, and Jill just keeps getting more creative, more thoughtful, and more community-minded with her programs. For example, on this slide, you can see that you can check out telescopes, binoculars, stepfinders, different meters, CD players, computers, blood pressure monitoring. There's a lot of different things at the library. You go there and ask, and you'll be surprised and see what they have for checking out. There are also connections with multiple groups. You know, we had some issues with people in need in the community, and we brought a social worker in. You can see her sitting at the table there. She's welcoming individuals who might have questions about, you know, social services, different mental health needs. And so Jill was able to work with one of our local banks, and they sponsored an SIU grad student to fill that position. And it's just, you know, an example of the thoughtfulness and the creativeness of our library personnel to fill that niche in the community, to take care of those that might need a little extra help or a little extra attention. And their FCB Bank, we want to thank you for your $2,500 donation to get that program up and off the ground. In addition to that, I know that this was our first annual book fair. Just tons of great pictures, booths there, as well as different organizations that came to meet the citizens and tell them what's available in terms of their resources at other libraries and other connections throughout the St. Louis area. So great job. I know Alderman Farrar worked with Jill on that, so thank you, Dr. Farrar. I think it's probably going to be delayed a little bit later in the year this year, but hopefully, there it is at the bottom of the screen, September 5th, 2020. We should be up and running by then. So hope to have another great book fair this year. Getting back to the finances. So as I mentioned earlier tonight, we had a new finance director position open up, and Jeanne Sheshlick is going to fill that. And now Jeanne gets to watch the numbers as closely as I do. But this is an exciting slide for me. It shows how our community has grown in value. I can't read the slide over on the right, because there's some numbers in the way, but I think we've had about in the last, since 2013, our community has grown by nearly $200 million in assessed value. And that's a fantastic number. That helps keep our tax rate down. So the next thing that you'll see, next slide, by having a growing community, we're able to reduce the tax rate. So as long as your property hasn't gone up in value, or you haven't made improvements to your property, you're actually paying a little bit less to the city of Edwardsville for your property taxes than you did in 2010. You see the 1.46 in 2010, and we were able to keep the rate at a 1.43, I believe, this year. So just an excellent example of what we try as elected officials is to reduce the property tax burden. Our sales tax growth has been tremendous, as you can see, from '13, '14, just ramping up. This year in '19, we had a decrease due to a payback to the state of Illinois. So the state apparently paid us too much money in 2013, and with the fines, fees associated with interest on that, they took about $500,000 worth of sales tax from us this year. Otherwise, we would have been continuing that climb. Our businesses are doing a fantastic job for us, and we're actually attracting a lot of residents from outside the area who are contributing to the sales tax number. And we expect to be back on track next year. Despite all the road construction and the park projects, the general fund balance continues to be healthy. We've changed the way we're looking at balances now, so this may be the last year we use this slide. We're looking at a different kind of accounting mechanism and a minimum approach to how much we have in the, in the reserves. But still a very good-looking slide. We continue to be fiscally responsible and able to, you know, weather storms like we're weathering now. There's a picture of Jeanne, our new finance director, and I can't say enough positive things about Jeanne. She's come on board and just worked with every individual, every department, and she's very good at explaining things to our aldermen in terms of budget, in terms of collections. You'll see on the next slide, as clerk, what she's been doing over the last year. Over $10.6 million collected in different utility bills. That's water and sewer and garbage bills that have been paid. Lots of meters being checked. And next slide will show you other, other aspects of the clerk's office. You can see the accounts payable and the ambulance services, as well as bid openings. The clerk opens up the bids when we have projects that we're designing and developing. And then birth and death certificates, as well as insurance claims, are handled through, any claims against the city are handled through the clerk's department. And I think there's one more slide. Some of these duties will be taken on by the newly-appointed clerk that we saw this evening, Emily Bates. And so under these duties, you'll see licenses, conduct the business, liquor license, tobacco license, food truck license, as well as handling the payroll. Total checks handled last year by our clerk's department was $14.7 million. So it's a lot going on in the clerk's department, and we think that pulling that, some of that responsibility into an appointed finance director position, and then having the elected clerk position continue, will help divide some of these duties and make it a little bit more smooth for those in the operations. And this is a picture of Emily, who took the oath of office this evening. Congratulations, Emily. We're happy to have you back. As she mentioned earlier, she was with us for 10 years in human relations, human resources. And so Emily's back on, and we're excited to have you. With that being said, move on to, you know, kind of a sad, a sad time. Last night, gave a little eulogy for our former mayor and a very good friend of mine, Gary Nieber. Gary served this community for 20 years as mayor, eight years as an alderman, and 35 years as director of the YMCA. And for those of you who are watching who might be interested in government and might even be interested in running for mayor, for you to be mayor for 20 years, just the only word I can think of in capital letters is passion. And earlier today, our ECTV former director and our IT director, John Cunningham and Devin Gray, put together this video for us and for the Nieber family. It's Gary's last speech with us, and everybody that knew Gary knew he could deliver a great speech. And he did this literally, I think it was seven years ago today, when he left office after 20 years of service. So enjoy this. And then at the end of this, we'll announce some plans about the procession that we would like the citizens to come out and honor. Since we can't have a former, formal funeral visitation, we've got an idea to line the streets to pay tribute to former Mayor Nieber.
It was 28 years ago, the people of Edwardsville allowed me to begin my service as a member of the city council, in the city that I was born and raised, and the city I love. I was proud of Edwardsville on that special day, and I'm proud of Edwardsville today. When I first took office, our first child, Ashley, was three months old, and attended my first meeting as elected official, sleeping in a pumpkin seat. Over the next six years, we were blessed to welcome Amanda and Abby. And one year after being elected mayor, Andrew was born, just in time to start helping us with our house full of beautiful little girls. Debbie and our kids have allowed me to be of service to the community that we all love. They have encouraged and supported me through this marvelous journey, and they have done so through great personal sacrifice. and they have done so through great personal sacrifice. Just as our family grew, I witnessed and treasured being a part of the remarkable growth and advancements of the city of Edworthville. While my family has always been my highest priority, this community has been and always will be a significant part of my family. 20 years ago yesterday, I was honored and humbled to take the oath of office as mayor. On that very special evening, I delivered my first State of the City address. Reflecting back on that message and our collective efforts thereafter, we focused on the need and solutions to improve our transportation system, rejuvenating a deteriorating downtown area, investing in our older established neighborhoods, diversifying our tax base, smart growth, fiscal responsibility and retaining the charm and character of the third oldest city in the state of Illinois. You know, those are important issues, but tonight, on my last day of office serving this great city, I would like to read a few excerpts of the closing of that address 20 years ago. That message included the following. "As we strive to move this community forward, I ask that we not lose sight of what I believe is our number one priority, providing quality services to the people of this community as effectively and efficiently as we can. The people of this city deserve no less." Another part of that closing included the following. "The people of this community have placed a great deal of trust in our hands. We must never minimize what we do. We must never minimize those whom we have been elected to serve." And included the following. "Despite the challenges that lie ahead, we are blessed people. This is an excellent community. One way of giving thanks and appreciation is by doing everything we can to make it even better." Those comments were made 20 years ago. Some things never change. "As mayor, I have witnessed countless accomplishments resulting from people working together to make Edworthville a great place to live, work and raise a family. I am proud to have played a role in the success of this community and my love and passion for this community shall never waver. I have been very fortunate to be surrounded by a loving family, marvelous friends and a community of exceptional citizens that have afforded me the opportunity to be of public service to my hometown. I extend my gratitude and my heartfelt thanks to the residents of Edworthville, the city council, appointed and elected officials, past and present, that I've had the great pleasure of working with. They have dedicated and they've committed themselves to serving this city and they have done so in admirable fashion. Edworthville has a proud past and Edworthville is a great community. I extend my best wishes to Mayor Patton and those elected and appointed to serve the people of Edworthville and I offer my continued support. And to the residents of Edworthville, I thank you for the honor and the privilege of allowing me to be of service. I thank all of you for your kindness and your support and I look out this evening and I see so many good friends and people have been so good to me and my family over the years and no one could be more grateful than I am of them. And to Debbie and the kids, there were great days. There were really good days. But the support that they gave me was throughout those great days and those good days and once in a while, those tough days. And I love you all. With that, that concludes the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn the sign/die meeting? We have a motion, we have a second. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you and God bless you all.
I told you it was pretty fantastic. When you think of public service, it doesn't get any better than that. So, thank you guys for putting that together. For Gary's tributes on Thursday, starting at 11:00 AM in the morning, starting at Weber Rodney Funeral Home on North Main. That's where the procession will start. And what we're asking is for the citizens to line the road. You can stay in your vehicle if you would like or you can get out and put your hand over your heart. It's just going to be the family members that are driving through the community and they're going to drive through significant parts of the community that Gary had an impact on. Starting down Main Street, they'll turn at Walgreens and go to Hadley House and then turn at Hadley House on 157 going by the Essex Y, which is the Nieber Center YMCA. From there, it'll go down to Governor's Parkway and that's another good place to watch it. Essex and Governor's, it'll go to the east. So, taking a left on Governor's Parkway and going all the way out to Ridgeview. So, the citizens want to be kind of in a safe shoulder area. You can do it on Main Street or you can do it on Governor's Parkway. Once that procession hits Ridgeview, they're turning right and coming back by the Meyer Center YMCA on Goshen Road and ultimately proceeding down Governor, excuse me, Center Grove Road to go over to 157 and out to Calvary Catholic Cemetery. So, we appreciate all of you that can participate and be there for Gary. He certainly was there for all of us over the years and that'll be Thursday at 11:00 AM. And just as he did, that concludes our sign and die meeting and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second by Alderman Resi.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much for being with us.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you Mayor Pratt.
Bye everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.